Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. Today I am honored to stand with one of our nation's great heroes, probably the most famous person in the world, Muhammad Ali. He learned to box at... Since here you learned to box to protect your bicycle from the neighborhood bullies at a very young age. It wasn't too long before he won the Louisville Golden Gloves Tournament at age sixteen as a light heavyweight. He followed up by winning the gold medal in boxing at the Rome Olympics in 1960. He defeated Sonny Liston in 1964 to become the World Boxing Association Champion. Shortly after, he found himself repeatedly defending his titles against challengers such as Floyd Patterson, Cleveland Williams, Ernie Terrell, coming out victorious every time. His boxing career was halted in the prime of his career because of his opposition to the war in Vietnam. However, he came out of retirement to win the WBA title from George Foreman in the famous Rumble in the Jungle fight in Zaire, and then went on to defend his title in ten successful bouts. Muhammad Ali's boxing legacy and his enmity to spirit have resulted in him being named Sports Illustrated Athlete of the Century and the BBC's Sports Personality of the Century, and has led to the depiction of Ali's life story in the major motion picture, Ali, which has broken box office records and garnered critical acclaim and several award nominations. Muhammad Ali revolutionized the sport of boxing, and his combination of power, grace, and charisma demonstrated your ability to float like a butterfly and sting like a bee. Muhammad Ali has continued to be a respected leader outside of the ring with his dedication to civil rights and your support of such charities as the National Parkinson's Foundation. Your impressive accomplishments in boxing and distinguished humanitarian achievements have indeed proven, Muhammad Ali, that you are the greatest. Therefore, it is my pleasure to proclaim your birthday, January seventeenth, two thousand and two, as Muhammad Ali Day, Ali Day in the city of Los Angeles, honor one of the great humanitarians of all time. Congratulations.
All I get is the day?
All you get is the day? Well, you get a... You got a... I'll give you a whole century. I'll give you a whole millennium. How's that? You deserve it. The Ali Millennium. You're joined today by your lovely wife, Lonnie. Thank you for being here again. You're a great couple and a great assistant in this humanitarian efforts that he's been part of. Thank you for being here today as well.
Thank you, Mayor. And thus begins the City Council for the year two thousand and two. What a start, huh? I want to thank you, Mayor, for bringing in the legend. We have a couple of council members who'd like to say a few words before we continue with the presentation. Mr. Holden.
As President, members, I too would like to thank the Mayor for bringing in the greatest fighter of all times. It's not just his day today, but it's for always, Muhammad, for always. I first saw him fight at Eastern Parkway Arena in New York, and he talked and talked and talked. The only fighter I've known to stand up and say, what, Ron is going to take a guy out there, and then he kept his word. He never let him down. But as he is the greatest fighter of all time, Mr. Mayor, he's the one individual that will go down in history of having validated the Constitution of the United States of America and the creed for which it is founded, freedom of religion. Not only did he oppose the war in Vietnam, but he stood up for his religion when it was considered to be very unpopular, but he stood strong and tall, and we are a stronger nation because of the commitment, the dedication of Muhammad Ali.
Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I too want to thank the Mayor for creating this Muhammad Ali Day, and I agree with you. It should be a century. It should be a millennium, and I just want to recount a story that was always meaningful to me personally. Muhammad Ali was a dear friend of my father's, your father too. And when my father, after his stroke and he was in a wheelchair and was deciding whether or not he would be physically capable of running again for another term of office, Muhammad Ali came personally to our home in the Crenshaw District and told my father that if need be, he would push him in the wheelchair door to door throughout his district so they could walk precincts together, and I'll never forget that. And my father considered you a dear friend until the very end. Congratulations on this fine achievement.
Councilmember Reyes.
I also rise to thank the Mayor, but more important, just as important, Muhammad Ali, we just saw your movie. I took my children to see it, and I stand here and all the history represents the struggles you've overcome, what you symbolize for the people of color, not only for Los Angeles but for the world. I can't find words to describe that. I just want to say thank you for being a role model and for all your efforts for everyone that knows what it means to struggle. Thank you so much.
Thank you, members. I think many people are learning a lot about none of the life of the legendary Muhammad Ali, but everything that he stood for through the movie that's in theaters now, and we encourage people to visit movie theaters located in the city of Los Angeles, but also in video stores in the city of Los Angeles. There's When We Were Kings, and if you can find it, a movie called The Greatest, where the greatest played himself and also has different perspectives and pieces of history. And I personally want to thank the champ, and he's still beautiful. I want to thank the champ for representing everything that he did, not only as an athlete and as a person, but truly symbolizing courage with his actions in his life at a time when it might not have been popular, but through his actions reminding us that as we look around the country and promote and protect and defend democracy and fairness and equality, that we also have to constantly look within our own country, within our own cities, and within our own communities, and make sure that we're fighting for and constantly struggling for those same principles here in our own homes as well. And we have one more member, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, champ, the greatest athlete of the century of all time. Congratulations. It's great to be here, but it's always great to see your ambassador, Howard Bigum, who covered a press conference at the Sheraton Townhouse out on Wilshire in nineteen sixty-two for the Sentinel. And Howard, instead of going straight back to the paper, he cruised downtown, and there standing in the corner at Fifth and Broadway was Cassius Clay, standing there, and he was looking at all the good people of Los Angeles. Howard offered him a ride, but he said, no, I just want to keep looking at all the good people of Los Angeles. So, all right. He know what he's looking at on Fifth and Broadway. God bless you, and God bless you for what you do for the Los Angeles Marathon, because at the start of the great race, so many times you're there with the Mayor of this great city, from Tom Bradley to Richard Ridden to James Hahn, and you're saluting and cheering all those thousands of people who hit those twenty-six miles in the streets of Los Angeles. You're truly an angel, not just in the city of angels, but an angel in this great earth, in this great world that we live in, in this great country. Thank you, Muhammad Ali, for being who you are, and thank you, Lonnie, for your family. Thank you very much, and Howard.
Mr. President, members of the council, today I'm honored to stand with one of our nation's great heroes, probably the most famous person in the world, Muhammad Ali. He learned to box at... Since here you learned to box to protect your bicycle from the neighborhood bullies at a very young age. It wasn't too long before he won the Louisville Golden Gloves Tournament at age sixteen as a light heavyweight. He followed up by winning the gold medal in boxing at the Rome Olympics in nineteen sixty. He defeated Sonny Liston in nineteen sixty-four to become the World Boxing Association Champion. Shortly after, he found himself repeatedly defending his titles against challengers such as Floyd Patterson, Cleveland Williams, Ernie Terrell, coming out victorious every time. His boxing career was halted in the prime of his career because of his opposition to the war in Vietnam. However, he came out of retirement to win the WBA title from George Foreman in the famous Rumble in the Jungle fight in Zaire, and then went on to defend his title in ten successful bouts. Muhammad Ali's boxing legacy and his enmity to spirit have resulted in him being named Sports Illustrated Athlete of the Century and the BBC's Sports Personality of the Century, and has led to the depiction of Ali's life story in the major motion picture, Ali, which has broken box office records and garnered critical acclaim and several award nominations. Muhammad Ali revolutionized the sport of boxing, and his combination of power, grace, and charisma demonstrated your ability to float like a butterfly and sting like a bee. Muhammad Ali has continued to be a respected leader outside of the ring with his dedication to civil rights and your support of such charities as the National Parkinson's Foundation. Your impressive accomplishments in boxing and distinguished humanitarian achievements have indeed proven, Muhammad Ali, that you are the greatest. Therefore, it is my pleasure to proclaim your birthday, January seventeenth, two thousand and two, as Muhammad Ali Day, Ali Day in the city of Los Angeles, honor one of the great humanitarians of all time. Congratulations.
All I get is the day?
All you get is the day? Well, you get a... You got a... I'll give you a whole century. I'll give you a whole millennium. How's that? You deserve it. The Ali Millennium. You're joined today by your lovely wife, Lonnie. Thank you for being here again. You're a great couple and a great assistant in this humanitarian efforts that he's been part of. Thank you for being here today as well.
Thank you, Mayor. And thus begins the City Council for the year two thousand and two. What a start, huh? I want to thank you, Mayor, for bringing in the legend. We have a couple of council members who'd like to say a few words before we continue with the presentation. Mr. Holden.
As President, members, I too would like to thank the Mayor for bringing in the greatest fighter of all times. You know, it's not just his day today, but it's for always, Muhammad, for always. I first saw him fight at Eastern Parkway Arena in New York, and he talked and talked and talked. The only fighter I've known to stand up and say, what, Ron is going to take a guy out there, and then he kept his word. He never let him down. But as he is the greatest fighter of all time, Mr. Mayor, he's the one individual that will go down in history of having validated the Constitution of the United States of America and the creed for which it is founded, freedom of religion. Not only did he oppose the war in Vietnam, but he stood up for his religion when it was considered to be very unpopular, but he stood strong and tall, and we are a stronger nation because of the commitment, the dedication of Muhammad Ali.
Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I too want to thank the Mayor for creating this Muhammad Ali Day, and I agree with you. It should be a century. It should be a millennium, and I just want to recount a story that was always meaningful to me personally. Muhammad Ali was a dear friend of my father's, your father too. And when my father, after his stroke and he was in a wheelchair and was deciding whether or not he would be physically capable of running again for another term of office, Muhammad Ali came personally to our home in the Crenshaw District and told my father that if need be, he would push him in the wheelchair door to door throughout his district so they could walk precincts together, and I'll never forget that. And my father considered you a dear friend until the very end. Congratulations on this fine achievement.
Councilmember Reyes.
I also rise to thank the Mayor, but more important, just as important, Muhammad Ali, we just saw your movie. I took my children to see it, and I stand here and all the history represents the struggles you've overcome, what you symbolize for the people of color, not only for Los Angeles but for the world. I can't find words to describe that. I just want to say thank you for being a role model and for all your efforts for everyone that knows what it means to struggle. Thank you so much.
Thank you, members. I think many people are learning a lot about none of the life of the legendary Muhammad Ali, but everything that he stood for through the movie that's in theaters now, and we encourage people to visit movie theaters located in the city of Los Angeles, but also in video stores in the city of Los Angeles. There's When We Were Kings, and if you can find it, a movie called The Greatest, where the greatest played himself and also has different perspective and pieces of history. And I personally want to thank the champ, and he's still beautiful. I want to thank the champ for representing everything that he did, not only as an athlete and as a person, but truly symbolizing courage with his actions in his life at a time when it might not have been popular, but through his actions reminding us that as we look around the country and promote and protect and defend democracy and fairness and equality, that we also have to constantly look within our own country, within our own cities, and within our own communities, and make sure that we're fighting for and constantly struggling for those same principles here in our own homes as well. And we have one more member, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, champ, the greatest athlete of the century of all time. Congratulations. It's great to be here, but it's always great to see your ambassador, Howard Bigum, who covered a press conference at the Sheraton Townhouse out on Wilshire in nineteen sixty-two for the Sentinel. And Howard, instead of going straight back to the paper, he cruised downtown, and there standing in the corner at Fifth and Broadway was Cassius Clay, standing there, and he was looking at all the good people of Los Angeles. Howard offered him a ride, but he said, no, I just want to keep looking at all the good people of Los Angeles. So, all right. He know what he's looking at on Fifth and Broadway. God bless you, and God bless you for what you do for the Los Angeles Marathon, because at the start of the great race, so many times you're there with the Mayor of this great city, from Tom Bradley to Richard Ridden to James Hahn, and you're saluting and cheering all those thousands of people who hit those twenty-six miles in the streets of Los Angeles. You're truly an angel, not just in the city of angels, but an angel in this great earth, in this great world that we live in, in this great country. Thank you, Muhammad Ali, for being who you are, and thank you, Lonnie, for your family. Thank you very much, and Howard.
Mr. President, members of the council, I did also want to acknowledge, as Councilman Labange pointed out, Ali's good friend, best friend over the years, Howard Bigum, world-renowned photographer who is here today. Howard, you're executive producer of Ali, and I want you to stand up so everybody sees who you are. You're also a great friend of our family, and your role in helping to present Ali's story and bringing that to the screen, I think, is going to be something that you are always going to be remembered for. Be sure and see all the books that Howard has put together, photography, especially his one on his good friend, Ali. Those photographs are some of the most exciting and breathtaking sports photographs that you will ever see, and Howard, as executive producer, couldn't miss a beat. He says, remind everybody that this Saturday night...
Saturday evening.
Saturday evening at the Kodak Theater...
In Hollywood.
In Hollywood.
Complex there. We will be celebrating Ali's sixtieth birthday, which we will... I'm sorry. We will film it Saturday night, and then it will air Wednesday, the sixteenth, on CBS.
And tickets are still available.
And R. Kelly, Mariah Carey...
Howard Bigum. Thank you, Lonnie.
Anyway.
Howard Bigum, also thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I honestly knew him when.
That's right. Well, you know, nineteen sixty-two, you mentioned that, Tom. That was the only professional fight I ever saw. Ali said that Moore, Archie Moore, who was the former light heavyweight champion of the world, Moore would go down in four, and it happened, just like he said, technical knockout in the fourth round. Only fight I ever went through. Said after that, how you beat it?
I told you.
You told me? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks a lot, everybody, for the honor. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. And now, I would like to officially welcome everyone to the first meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for the year two thousand and two. Today is Tuesday, January eighth. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at ten a.m. We can be viewed from home, live, on your cable station, Channel thirty-five, viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Hahn, Holden, Labange, Mr. Casse, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, with the Thomas Weiss, Zein Padilla, twelve members present in the quorum.
Thank you very much. Before beginning with the agenda of today's meeting, if I could ask everybody to please rise and ask Mr. Burnson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you all place your hand over your heart and repeat after me?
Mr. Mayor, members of the press, if we can get some order, we're about to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can we go ready or not? Place your hand over your heart and repeat after me a pledge to our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, as has been customary to do on a monthly basis, and beginning with this year, we will be doing it on a weekly basis by action of this council. We've begun today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and are also joined today by Father David Iodi for an invocation. Father Iodi is the Director of Propagation of the Faith for the Archdiocese of Los Angeles and represents the Catholic community, and in speaking with the good Father prior to the meeting, I know he does a lot of traveling.
pointed out, Ali's good friend, best friend over the years, Howard Bigum, world-renowned photographer, who is here today. Howard, you're executive producer of Ali, and I want you to stand up so everybody sees who you are. You're also a great friend of our family, and your role in helping to present Ali's story and bringing that to the screen, I think is going to be something that you are always going to be remembered for. Be sure and see all the books that Howard has put together, photography, especially his one on his good friend Ali. Those photographs are some of the most exciting and breathtaking sports photographs that you will ever see. And Howard, as executive producer, couldn't miss a beat. He says, remind everybody that this Saturday night...
Saturday evening?
Saturday evening at the Kodak Theater...
Theater in Hollywood.
In Hollywood.
Complex there. We, we will be celebrating Ali's 60th birthday, which we will, I'm sorry. We will film it Saturday night, and then it will air Wednesday, the 16th, on CBS.
And tickets are still available.
And R. Kelly, Mariah Carey, um...
Howard Bigum. Thank you, Lonnie.
Anyway.
Howard Bigum, also, thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I honestly knew him when.
That's right. Well, you know, 1962, you mentioned that, Tom, that was the only professional fight I ever saw. Ali said that Moore, Archie Moore, who was the former light heavyweight champion of the world, Moore would go down in four, and it happened, just like he said, technical knockout in the fourth round. Only fight I ever went through. Said after that how you beat it?
I told you.
You told me?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks a lot, everybody, for the honor. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you very, very much. And now, I would like to officially welcome everyone to the first meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for the year 2002. Today is Tuesday, January 8th. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We can be viewed from home, live, on your cable station, Channel 35, viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Hahn, Holden, Labange, Ms. Sikowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, with the Thomas Weiss, Zine Padilla, 12 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Before beginning with the agenda of today's meeting, if I could ask everybody to please rise and ask Mr. Burnson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you all place your hand over your heart and repeat after me?
Mr. Mayor, members of the press, if we can get some order, we're about to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can we go ready or not? Place your hand over your heart and repeat after me a pledge to our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, as has been customary to do on a monthly basis, and beginning with this year, we will be doing it on a weekly basis by action of this council. We've begun today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and are also joined today by Father David Iodi for an invocation. Father Iodi is the Director of Propagation of the Faith for the Archdiocese of Los Angeles and represents the Catholic community. And in speaking with the Good Father prior to the meeting, I know he does a lot of traveling, doing mission work, overseeing missionary work throughout the world, and I think it's very appropriate, as here, Los Angeles, home, to people from around the world, that he goes and carries the message of the Archdiocese and the message of Los Angeles back to native lands around the globe. Father?
Thank you, Councilman Padilla, and I'm also very honored in my work. I have a chance to usually be in Africa, and on this celebration with Muhammad Ali, not only in the Muslim community, but throughout the world, he is so highly regarded as a person of unity and a person who is reaching out in service, not only to the local community, but the international community. So as we begin this new year for the City Council, let's just take a moment to place ourselves in the presence of the one God, unites us across many faith traditions and beliefs, holds us together. We take a moment of quiet now. Loving God watch over Mayor Hahn, over this City Council, for all those who in this new year will be making decisions that affect this city, that we may see our call as one to reach out to each other, to protect each other, to especially look out for those who have the least. And we be a people of generosity, very much like Muhammad Ali, who takes through struggles, difficulties, and even illness, and draws the community together, not only locally, but internationally. Fill us with the spirit of concern, of care, that draws us together more deeply to express what this great city is about. Fill us again, Lord, with your care, your love, that we may make decisions that fill us with wisdom, that fill us with an ability to continue to go out of ourselves and hold the world and this local city together. We make this prayer in the name of a loving God who holds us all in His hands. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. You may be seated.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Mr. Zine seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Burnson moves, and Ms. Sikowski seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, and public hearings, items noticed for public hearings, Items 1 and 2 are street lighting districts, ordinances are on the file, and a motion is required from the floor.
Is there a motion on Items 1 and 2? Street lighting. Ms. Perry is Chair of Public Works. Ms. Perry moves, approval. Items 1 and 2 before us, members. I do not have requests from members of the public to speak. Public hearing shall be deemed open and closed. Members wishing to speak on Items 1 and 2? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Items 1 and 2 are approved. Those are ordinances, and there are 12 votes.
Items 3 and 4, Mr. President, are also public hearing. Items, council should open the public hearing and continue the hearing and ordinance to January 29th.
Items 3 and 4 now before us. Public hearing is now open. I do not have requests from members of the public to speak on these items today. These items shall continue, and the public hearing shall remain open until January 29th. Next item, please.
Next items, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, Items 5 through 32.
Items 5 through 32 now before us. Members wishing to call any specials? Items 5 through 32. 24, call special by Mr. Zine. Items 5 through 32, with the exception of 24. Madam Clerk, are we prepared to vote on the balance of the items? Do we need a motion on Item 29?
Yes, Mr. President.
Let's call that special.
The, excuse me, the report has been distributed, so if you wish to just have a motion on that one, that can be voted on now.
Item 29. It's also a public works item from the Bureau of Sanitation. Ms. Perry is Chair of the Committee. Did you wish to move? Ms. Perry moves, Item 29. Colleagues, we have Items 5 through 32, with the exception of 24, before us. Mr. Holden?
13 and 31 special.
Mr. Holden calls 13 and 31 special. Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, Items 33 through 52.
Items 33 through 52 now before us. We have cards on 50 and 52. Let's call those special. Any other specials? Mr. Holden calls 51 special. Any other specials? 33 through 52. With the exception of Items 50, 51, and 52, Madam Clerk, please open a roll on Items 33 through 49. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved. Let's send Items 29 and 32 forthwith, please. Next item?
Next item, Mr. President, Items called special, Item number 13, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Item 13 now before us, Mr. Holden. You called Item 13 special?
As President, members, we just brought in the first reading of amending the ordinance that relates to billboards being posted near, I guess, schools and so on, the advertising, alcohol, et cetera. And I just cannot understand, have we fought so hard in order to protect our children from the incidence of displaying alcohol in and around our schools and play areas? And the lawsuit was broad, and I just thought it'd be a good idea to have a public hearing, to have those who are here, maybe the city attorney explain how they were able to win, and at least to give public notice is that what we're trying to do is good for our community, and there are those who are trying to offset the good things that we have done and fought for over the years on their behalf. And so that's why I call it special, Mr. President, and if anybody here just to discuss the case briefly, I would appreciate that. The public has a need and a right to know.
Madam City Attorney, is there somebody here?
We're gonna hold it over until...
This is an ordinance which basically we are doing because the Supreme Court has invalidated an ordinance that was very, very similar to this, and therefore, the council voted to invalidate this ordinance.
Well, what are the points, the arguments that they made before the court in order to cause the reversal in this ordinance? You obviously did not try the case and not familiar with...
No, I didn't.
If someone did, would you get them down here?
I will call them immediately.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Burnson.
Members of the council, unfortunately, we don't have any recourse in this matter. I just want to add that we're doing this with our severe objections to the position taken by the U.S. Supreme Court on this issue. We do believe that there is a right to protect the rights, the welfare of children, and schools, and so forth. And I think that the, hate to say it, but the courts have erred in this particular case. There are other means of addressing this, and if I were the billboard industry today, I would be very worried about what local governments are going to do as far as their future rights to erect billboards anywheres in local governments. And that may have something to do with a little leverage in this particular case, because I can tell you right now that I'm not going to support any company for any type of application unless they give us a promise that they will not put this type of advertising up willfully, because we can't do it otherwise, but willingly agree not to do that. So there's many ways to skin a cat, and we need to find, explore some of those ways. We have no choice but to go along with this. But I want to voice my opposition and my disregard of what the Supreme Court has done in this particular case. I think it's out of order.
Okay. Mr. Holden, do you still wish to hold this on the desk? Or is there a city attorney here now?
The city attorney, the city attorney is on his way down. If you want to hold this on the desk...
Let's hold this on the desk. Take the next item.
Item number 24 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine? Item 24.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have some questions regarding Item 24, regarding LAX, and I'm wondering if there's any staff here from LAX to give some insight and respond to some of the questions. Anyone here from LAX regarding Item 24? If not, I would request that we hold this until we can get some response from them. I have some concerns regarding some of the security measures and some modifications that may be possible to help relieve some of the problems that they're having with the economic situation, the jobs currently at LAX.
We actually may wish to continue this for one day.
I'd like to do that if we could, and we could, if there's no one here from LAX, if we could continue that and have them...
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Zine moves continuation for one day on this item so we can hear from officials from the airport. Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Council, President, colleagues, I was hoping maybe we can have CDD answer a couple of questions I have regarding this item. On this item, yes. I understand we're asking for money. Lily would like to... I understand we're asking for more money to help put together the team that will take on this workload that we anticipate in order to process the applicants for potential job support programs. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm Lily Kawasaki, General Manager of the Community Development Department, and what we've asked for, and this is, is additional funds, well, funds are already allocated within the Workforce Investment Act for a thing called Rapid Response. This is a federal regulations require that when companies are going to do layoffs, they need to provide their employees briefings and assistance to try and find additional employment, to let them know about the benefits that are available to them. What we're asking in this is to allow us to hire additional staff so that we may provide the kind of rapid response that we are required to do by law, and we have already been doing this work. We have an additional 5,000 or so employees that we've already made presentations to that do need these benefits, and the level of need continues.
I think you hit on my following-up question is, how large is this labor pool that we're looking to assist? I mean, how, what's the number like? And you're saying it's 5,000?
5,000 have already been served today.
Have already been served?
Served today.
And how many more do we anticipate?
That's...
This is Angie Yanni, Community Development Department. The estimates that we've heard to date is, it could go as high as 110,000 in the LA area.
110,000. So the additional resources you're seeking will hopefully address the shortcomings of the department to address that volume?
Correct. And these are not general, these are no general funds, these are workforce investment funds that have been allocated specifically for this rapid response.
So in the 5,000, you have a profile of individuals who are in this situation that we need to address? Is there like a, how are you identifying these folks, and how are we connecting the resources with their needs?
The major way that we are identifying these employees is that there is a requirement for employers to notify the state, and the state notifies us. Within then 48 hours, we are required to meet with employer and set up a whole series of briefings about benefits. And this is not limited to only the LAX onsite, this is for the general area in the Los Angeles area, so it's broader than that.
Great.
The other thing that we do besides working, and then it's a collaborative response, it's really is a team response with EDD, which is the state, talk about unemployment benefits, health benefits that would be extended to displaced workers. In addition, we work very, very closely with our system of One Stop, or now called Work Source Centers, who then match employees or displaced workers with employers that are looking for workers.
So I would appreciate if I get a list of these access points, these locations, so that way those folks who are in the districts, well, the neighborhoods I'm familiar with, not only in my district, but throughout the northeast area, to be able to guide folks to these points so they can connect with these support programs.
Absolutely, we can do that.
We would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I think some of those questions were addressed properly. I want to get clear, I was a member of the Workforce Investment Board in the South Bay for almost a decade, and I want to make sure we're clear on what it means when you say we have served 5,000 people, and that number may go up to 110,000 that are in our service area that we serve. What exactly does that mean when you've said we have served 5,000 people so far? And I'd like you to explain from the low end to the high end, so that we're clear on what this means.
Right. Since the July date, July of this, or this last year, there have been over 5,000 employee, displaced workers, people that have been given notices that they're going to be laid off, that have actually been in meetings, in briefings, and so that with our staff, and then the team of the state, and the local whip members have actually had onsite presentations. The broader number that we're talking about that maybe are projections that come through us, primarily through the state, on how many additional, and that's just an estimate, whereas the over 5,000 are the actual numbers that we, in this local area, have actually provided hands-on service to.
So when you say, when you say you've served, you've made presentations to them, you've given them options on their unemployment benefits, on possible job retraining, how, can you estimate how many of those 5,000 at this point have actually been relocated to a new job?
No, we don't have that information at this time, but you are correct. When we say serve, we mean we've actually done an in-person presentation, telling them all their options, making sure that they, we very often will bring a Work Source Center staff with us in the, from the area, so that they can immediately register, if they wish to, into the WIA system and immediately begin searching for a new job.
And explain what Rapid Response is, as opposed to just your normal...
Right. That is a system that's set up where a team of city, state, and federal employees representing all the types of services that are available to someone who loses their job, go onsite and present to the employers, and this is coordinated with employees, it's coordinated with the employer, and tells them all the kinds of benefits, the paperwork is there for them to fill out, so that there's minimal time necessary for them to make an adjustment to losing this job and seeking a new job, and also retaining health benefits when it's eligible, and signing up for unemployment benefits to minimize the financial impact to them.
Okay. I, I mean, I agree that this is, we're still in a crisis, and I absolutely agree that we need this extra funding, we need extra resources. I would be interested, and I would like to have a report maybe on, and I think for all of us, we need to know how serious this crisis is. It's one thing, obviously, to get benefits, to get unemployment benefits, health benefits, but I, obviously, the ultimate goal is to get these workers retrained and relocated in new jobs. So I would like to see a report back of those initial 5,000, you know, where are we? Have they got new jobs at this point, four months after September?
Mr. Zine?
Yes, after hearing the comments, further questioning LAX participation, since I know that Item Number 24 specifically mentions LAX a number of times and doesn't mention the wider base, as you discussed in your statements. I know that a number of people have been relocated, and we talk about Rapid Response, we're almost four months after September 11th, and if we're talking about Rapid Response four months late, maybe that's considered rapid for government, but for the people who need it, it's definitely slow at the snail's pace. But I would continue to request that we have that continued for one day and have LAX participation, since I think this focuses on LAX and the questions of the 5,000, what's happened with those people, how many of the operations have gone back online? I know that some of the operations that are within the, in the perimeter, or outside the perimeter, and then inside the perimeter, the screening area, have been impacted, but as the parking starts to be relaxed, the parking restrictions, and some of those other impacts, and you talk about 100,000, I don't think LAX has 100,000 in... other impacts, and you talk about 100,000, I don't think LAX has 100,000 employees, so you're at a wider base. But this item specifically talks about LAX. And if you're reaching out to other areas, which I'm concerned about, well, we're talking specifically about LAX, and I think we need to hear from them what they have done, what the short-term, what the long-term, and when we plan to get back to somewhat semblance of order in operations with the added security and with the federal government now imposing the restrictions on the screening and the training and the standards, and how many of people will be qualified, how many of them will not be qualified. All those issues fall into line with this question. So I would say that we critically need LAX to answer in conjunction with what you can respond to. And in this wider spectrum that you're discussing, how wide is that? Is it the entire LA region? Is it just Westchester? We have a lot of, I have a lot of unanswered questions, and I think we'd have to have them here in conjunction with you to answer those. So I would, can ask that we have this continued for one day.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I respectfully ask of my colleague, Councilmember Zein, maybe to withdraw the motion to continue. I think that the 100,000, to answer some of the questions, is region-wide. We also have a need, I think, to get this, this is just pass-through money. This is federal money which is, we need to authorize, but it is not coming out of our general fund. We also need to make sure that we have the capacity so that those numbers are as high as they can be. We also, I think, have a very conscious need to look not just at folks that are around LAX, but this actually deals with workers that are throughout the city that have already been impacted. We know that number of people served is not the number of people who have jobs, and I too want to get those numbers, but I think that our need to act on this and make sure that we just simply authorize that funding which doesn't come from us is urgent enough that we should go forward with that today. As Chair of EDE, I would urge my colleagues not to continue this, but to put that through and make sure those questions are answered in the meantime. That number, though, 100,000, is region-wide, not the city, and this already has impacted folks in every single council district who work in the airport or areas related to the airport. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Then we have the motion to continue. Mr. Zein.
I would just say that I don't understand why one-day continuance, to have them respond, would really be a problem. And we're only talking a few hours between today and tomorrow to get this answered, so we don't have any unanswered questions. And the thing that troubles me is that what you're referring to, this 100,000, is not mentioned in here. This specifically discusses LAX and nothing else. And we're talking a broader region. I think we need to be honest with the people who we're giving this money to, and they need to be honest with us, is what it's for. But I see that there are some unanswered questions, and LAX isn't here to respond to it, and we're talking a larger region. So I don't see, honestly, why one-day continuance on this, almost four months after September 11th, is really going to be that critical. I'm not asking for a week or 30 days, I'm only asking for one day.
What's also an option is to act on some, if not all, of the recommendations in the report and still continue the matter for further discussion and questions tomorrow. That's another option. Mr. Garcetti.
Then maybe we could move that, to move the item, but to continue pending further discussion, the LAX component that you've laid out? Would that be acceptable? Okay, great.
Mr. Burnson.
Well, I don't know what difference a day is going to make, I'll go along with it. But I can tell you this, if you're unemployed and you need to pay the rent or feed your family, every day is important.
That's true, Hal.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, then I believe what's been accepted is to act on the recommendations in the report before us today and continue the subject matter one day for further discussion tomorrow. Without further discussion, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item number...
Mr. President.
Mr. Holden, I'm sorry, for an introduction.
Mr. President, it's my pleasure to introduce a councilperson and a former mayor from the neighboring city, the city of the Roses, the city of Pasadena. This person is well-known to me because of his reputation, having served that city so well for the past 12 years. And has he done a good job over there, has helped us here in a more positive way in the city of Los Angeles. And I want to invite him to stand to my left, because he's the tallest person in the room, in the council chambers that they accept from me. His name is Chris Holden, and he's my big cousin. Some people try to say he's my big brother. But I got to tell you, he's the greatest, one of the greatest sons I have, and I have two. Chris Holden, councilperson, city of Pasadena. Mr. President, you want to say something?
Yeah, is this why you say all the time, "Don't mess with me, because I'll call my son over"?
You got that right. And the other one too, you know...
Someone I can look up to. No, it's great having you here, Chris. We've run into each other and worked together in the past, and you're always welcome here. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number 31, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item 31.
This police scholarship fund. Mr. President, remember, I need to know some specifics on the scholarship fund whereby we requesting a grant that provides something in the order of about $7,000, $7,500 per student. For those individuals who would serve on the police department and give us four years of service, they would not have to repay that grant. I think there's just more than just offering, making it available. We need to know for how many students, and we need to know whether or not the physical requirements, whether or not they can pass examination, physical examination, once they complete college, and whether or not we're giving these scholarships to the right people. There are a number of questions that need to be answered, Mr. President, and that's why I raised the question called this special. If anyone is prepared to answer those questions, I would like to know. And we hold my time, Mr. President, as Mr. Deaton attempt to answer the questions.
I'll do my very best, Mr. Holden.
I appreciate that, Mr. Deaton.
Thank you. The federal program requires a state to apply. The state hasn't applied, so we cannot pursue that. So what are the recommendation, the first recommendation is that we pursue and have personnel talk, report back on a program of tuition reimbursement within the city.
The program is not before us, then, if you're...
No. And so we're suggesting that we, because of the need for the state to make the first application, that doesn't seem to be a wise course of action. So we're suggesting that the council report, have the Personnel Department report back through the Public Safety Committee on a program of tuition reimbursement, which would be satisfactory to your objective.
So we say, let's get the program moving.
That's right.
And then, of course, we'll design a developer program to apply each student.
We'd be able to design it specifically for our needs.
Yeah, but they're talking about the amounts of monies, I mean, at least they could talk about the qualification of the student, even in this report. Isn't that not correct, Mr. Deaton?
No, I think, we're requesting the Personnel Department to report back on the whole thing.
Oh, you're shaking your head no? Well, then I believe you. All right, so fine, this first step. I'll accept it, Mr. President.
Next time, we'll have Herb make the report, and then you'll probably be more satisfactory.
Ms. Misakowski.
Mr. Holden is right to ask some of the questions on this matter. This was a motion that was introduced by Mr. Pacheco, asking whether or not we could avail ourselves of scholarship assistance for, as a recruitment measure, to help us recruit officers, to give them another incentive from college to come to the LAPD and to get some tuition reimbursement. As Mr. Deaton explained, the one program that is out there and is available through a federal-funded process needs the state to make the first application and then make it available to the cities. They haven't done that yet, so we have asked the Personnel Department to both be in contact with the state and to look at other opportunities to see whether or not this is, as an incentive, as a recruitment tool, makes some sense. So we will get reports passed, asking the questions that Mr. Holden has asked that were in the initial report, and when we find answers for them, to determine whether or not this, among a lot of other things that we're looking at as recruitment, are, is whether or not this is one of the better tools that we might use. There are a number of other tools that we're looking at right now, including rehiring back other officers who left the force, who might be interested again in coming back to LAPD, and a whole array of other issues. So we will be reporting those to the council on a regular basis, but this is just one that we need more information before we move forward with it.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I just want to thank Councilmember Misakowski and the Chair of Public Safety for working on this motion with us. And Nate Holden has some good questions that we will get information back to him on. I just believe that anytime we can get our officers in a situation where they're pursuing education, or we get people who are already pursuing education to become officers, that's better for the city, and that's why I introduced the motion, so we can get a better-qualified and a better-staffed police department. And I just ask your support for the motion. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Seeing no other speakers, I believe we're prepared for a vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 13 is on the desk, and I understand that the city attorney is here on that item.
Madam City Attorney.
Mr. Kleckner was here just two seconds ago. Oh, here he is.
We ask you to come forward. Mr. Holden, you had called this item special.
This item was held on desk, Mr. President, and I think the city attorney is prepared to explain how the Supreme Court overruled the good judgment of the city council by requiring us to remove the requirement whereby alcohol advertisement in areas where kids are playing or at, near their school, they're saying is something by the constitutional question? The public has a right to know. Why does Supreme Court, once again, is off-base?
Well...
You can say that, it's all right.
Having been, having just been there, the answer is they're never off-base, they just, anyway. What occurred, this is a First Amendment challenge to the city's ordinance, the underlying litigation. In July of last year now, or the end of June of last year, the Supreme Court decided a case called Laurelard, which invalidated on First Amendment grounds regulations of the state of Massachusetts, which were substantially similar to the types of regulations the city has.
In what way were they similar? You got to explain it. I mean, are they identical? You think the court, since they ruled against the state of Massachusetts, they would have like ruled against the state of Los Angeles?
The way the court looked at the issue, the First Amendment issue, is percentage of the area of the state where advertising was precluded. And they held that 89 to about 91 or 92 percent of the state where such advertising could not go violated the First Amendment. Our existing sign ordinance, without considering any content-based regulation, precludes outdoor advertising billboards in approximately 88 or 89 percent of the city. So without any...
No, 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 it did not preclude outdoor advertising of liquor only.
Signs, signs.
Yeah, okay, sign.
Signage.
Signage, certain types of signage.
So if you were to add on to that, any content-based restrictions, you are well above the percentage that the Supreme Court said was suspect.
80 percent, is what you said.
90 percent.
90 percent.
We're well above 90 percent.
Oh, I'm glad you're explaining it, because you know what? I don't agree with you. The fact, the matter of your interpretation, when you do a comparative analysis of what took place in Massachusetts compared to what we've done here, is not the same thing. When they say they preclude advertising in 89, 90 percent of a certain areas, is that just advertise, putting billboards up altogether, or a certain kinds of signage on those billboards?
The Supreme Court looked at two things. It discussed the fact that there were in place throughout the state, state and local regulations restricting the location of sign structures. Combined...
Sign structures.
Combining that with the restrictions now imposed by regulating by content.
Oh, man.
The Supreme Court said that precluding such advertising in between 89 and 91 percent of the state of Massachusetts violated the First Amendment because it was totally content-based. Our ordinance, the city ordinance, without any consideration of content, restricts advertising sign structures to 89 percent of the city. It's precluded. So without any content-based considerations, we are well within the percentages that the Supreme Court said were suspect if it were content-based.
Well, what about the word proliferation? I mean, you can't have a billboard every five feet. I mean, you say that, then that applies, then you could, they can do it every 10 feet, every five feet, every 25 feet, every 30 feet.
There is no constitutional infirmity if you want to ban all outdoor advertising signs. The moment you say this advertising can go here but not there, you run afoul of the First Amendment. That is what the Supreme Court said. You want to regulate the distances between structures, you are free to do that. The Supreme Court has already discussed this in the past, and they have never budged one inch from the fact that non-content-based regulations of signs is fully within the discretion of the city of Los Angeles or any other governmental entity. The issue is when you say a particular type of advertising can go here but not there, and when you start adding up the percentages...
That's where you're dealing with specifics, particular type of advertising.
Correct.
Alcohol, you could, you could do alcohol in other parts of the city, we're just saying near schools, et cetera, and that's not 90 percent of the area.
But you can't look at it...
That's not 90 percent of the area in which they can ever advertise. I don't know how you come to that decision. It is not. What percentage is it then, if you know what the percentage is?
You combine the two. When you look at the basic restrictions on sign placements and add on to that content-based regulations...
You're just throwing in the towel, that's what you're doing.
Oh, I've been never known to throw in the towel, sir.
Well, you're throwing this, I believe that's the case, sir.
Well, you may disagree with our legal analysis, but we think the Supreme Court...
Well, there's no urgency to do this. Why don't we just sit down and talk about it and hold it over?
We have a federal judge that is keenly aware that, this is before the council, we have to either act on it or go on with the litigation. We do not have, given her structure, her scheduling order, we have to be prepared for trial in a month or so.
Well, that's all right, in a month or so, two months, fine, that's no problem. In fact, the matter of, just you and I talk about it tomorrow, why can't you hold it over until Friday? I mean, you have any problem with that?
I, if you want to hold this off, it's within your discretion to hold this off. I can't say that the federal judge is going to get mad at me between now and Friday. However, it cannot be put off indefinitely.
All right, fine. Mr. President, I think that there's an additional clarification is needed, and I'd be delighted to vote with this, was being very comfortable about my vote. So Friday would be just fine, you and I can talk about these details. I would love to do that.
At your service.
Mr. President, I respectfully request that we hold it off until Friday.
Okay.
City Attorney supports that.
Motion to continue until Friday. Ms. Misakowski.
Although I agree with the sentiment of what Mr. Holden has expressed, there, it is clear, if you read the entire case on which this is based, that the Supreme Court would not uphold our existing ordinance. What the Supreme Court would uphold is just a ban on billboards near schools, near playgrounds, near churches, near, but just no content. And that was one of the approaches that is now pending before the Planning and Land Use Management Committee. I think that, I have no objection to continuing it, but I think it is inevitable, we should adopt this, and we should get on with doing what is allowed under the law. And members of the council, I think the time is ripe again to revisit the whole issue of billboards. As Mr. Burnson has indicated, there has been, obviously, news in the media over the last couple of weeks, and I think we have a new council who wants to look again at the issue of billboards. And while we have a current moratorium on billboards in the city, I think the time might be right to look at a complete billboard ban in the city, just put it out there. But before that, we could ban the billboards in the area that this ordinance purported to ban them, at least in terms of the content, we would just leave the content out and ban them. So I think that those issues are ripe, those issues are before the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, and I believe that we should get on with doing what we can do, not spend time and effort needlessly on a lawsuit that we would not win, but to put our efforts towards those things that could be successful, that would hold up in court and have the same effect. So if Mr. Holden wants to continue this, I have no objection, but I think on Friday we should adopt it and get on with what is the serious business of controlling the kind of billboard advertising in our city that makes sense to the majority of us.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski. Then without objection, there's been a motion to continue, item 13, to this Friday, January 11th. Madam Clerk.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 50, called special, in as much as there are cards from the public.
Before we take item 50, Mr. Lavange wanted to say a few words.
Mr. President, members of council, I just wanted to, again, recognize Chris Holden, Councilman of the city of Pasadena. Pasadena just had the greatest parade of all, Down the Rose Parade, and I was so happy to see our float on the front cover of the Los Angeles... to see our float on the front cover of the Los Angeles Times and the Daily News, and happy that we invited the New York firefighters and Port Authority, and happy that Pam Mullen, that angel that she is, paid for that to come out here in the cooperative spirit of the Universal Studios for their hosting them, as well as the work with the Department of Water and Power. But Chris Holden in the City of Pasadena deserves our accolades, even though they're the crown of the valley here in the great Southern California area, that parade is what we're all about. And if we get criticized for not having a New Year's Eve party in Los Angeles, it's only because we want to get up early and see that great parade in the City of Pasadena. Please, when you go back to your council, when you meet, please give them the regards from all of the city council in Los Angeles, and thank them for the great parade, and tell them, next time, invite a team from the Pac-ten to play whoever they want. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Think that's gonna be happening next year. Now, back to item fifty, we do have a card submitted, a member of the public wishing to be heard. The council calls forward Armando Herman, Armando Herman, item number fifty.
This is not a particular point that I'm trying to address, but there seems to be quite a bit of debris, trash, always on the streets within Boyle Heights area. And I try to address it not only just in that area, but it's an area that's basically within the city. And I think the city needs to stiffen up on the ordinance, stiffen up on the law for people who litter our streets, for people who don't appreciate or value their property or value the properties of others without consideration. So Mr. Pacheco has been trying desperately, but I think he needs more assistance as far as getting a lot of this motive or idea to stamp out these offenders. I call them criminals, because here we're talking about beautifying our city, we're talking about expanding better things in Los Angeles, and I see it depreciating. I see it, especially in our neighborhoods, falling apart. So I'm asking if, for a reason, I'm asking for suggestions, or I can help provide suggestions in order to, or even hopefully, clean up the act, so to speak, because it's a shame that people don't care about other people's values or morals, the way they litter the street. So if you haven't seen it, when you're driving around east of Los Angeles, Boyle Heights or El Surino, where mattresses and couches, bulky items are just littering our streets, it's a joke that it could sit there for two to three weeks, and no one acknowledges it until someone like myself gets on the phone and says, "What's the excuse for this? Why isn't it happening in other cities? Why isn't it happening only in Los Angeles?" Because people are not looking at this matter more scrutiny like I do. All I care about is seeing that my kids walk across the street where it's clean, I want to see other kids cross neighborhoods where it's clean, like in other areas of towns where I've been to. So all I'm asking is if something can get done, or give me some help to do something about it more.
Okay. Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on item number fifty. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I want to thank Mr. Herman for coming down and taking time out of his day. As you know, we always focus on trying to keep the community clean. Unfortunately, Mr. Herman is correct, that sometimes requests for bulk item pickups take way too long, and that's something that we're putting more and more pressure on the department to pick up those items in a timely manner. Also, interestingly enough, very recently, in the community of Boyle Heights, there was a major organizing effort, where close to three hundred people from Brick Street School went out and canvassed and surveyed the school, the community, door-to-door. And this is the first time I've seen a survey come out of the community where crime was not number one in terms of concern, it was actually cleanliness. So we, at this time, would encourage anyone who lives in CD fourteen to work with us with our annual spring cleanups. We call them celebrating a clean community. This year will be our fourth year doing that, so I believe the time is ripe, the community is in a position to assist us in maintaining a clean environment. So I do want to thank Mr. Herman for coming by and sharing his experience with us, and ask that you support the motion.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I understand the concern for the east part of the city, but I welcome people to come to the west part of the San Fernando Valley, and they'll find the same kind of decay and debris. In addition to the etching of the windows, the business windows in our community being etched by the taggers graffiti, I attended a funeral service Saturday in San Pedro, Palace Verdi's area, and my route from the San Fernando Valley down the Ventura Freeway, down the Hollywood Freeway, down the Harbor Freeway, graffiti has been exploding in this city. Not only the trash on the streets, the couches, but graffiti is out of control, which is a reflection of the gang activity in the city, they just don't care, and it destroys our communities. I was out in Thousand Oaks yesterday and saw a very clean environment, and I traveled to other cities in the surrounding Southern California area where they don't have this kind of light. And I know that our community is working with the chambers, with the business, with the churches, to try and eradicate it. We're posting rewards at our high schools to try and find out who the people are. I discussed with Councilman Pacheco yesterday, increasing the $500 reward for people who bring forward individuals who are destroying our community with the graffiti, with the tagging, with the etching on the windows. I know recently Councilman Sikowski authored a motion which was passed, requiring storekeepers to lock up that etching substance, it is destroying the city. And there are a certain number of thugs in this city who just don't care about a quality of life, and I, for one, along with my colleagues, want to make that happen. I'll definitely support the motion on the $30,000, and I think that somehow we need to turn that attitude around to get the people who care and concern, as the gentleman who spoke, so your family will be safe and secure, and you'll have a quality of life, you won't see the decay. And it's because our limited resources, but when I call and ask for more law enforcement, they don't have the personnel to come out and do it. So it's upon us and our communities to band together to turn this negative attitude around.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, colleagues. I rise to remind ourselves that, as chairpersons of our respective committees, we are in positions to challenge the departments, again, to find ways in which we can work with our contracts, to work with our discretionary funds, work with our departments to see where we can create jobs for these young people. Again, this crime, this criminal activity has a lot to do with idle time. So I'm gonna be saying this over and over again, but we need to find ways to create jobs for these young people, so that idle time won't be so prevalent, and we can create opportunities for them. True, we do have to have the enforcement element, but let's start looking at our supportive systems, and every opportunity I get, I'm gonna continue saying this, until we start, actually start seeing these programs begin to unfold. I know we started with the TNI, we're challenging the TNI program, but you look at the budget cuts, we're gonna be cutting a substantial portion of those funds. So again, you know, we have to be realistic, is what we're saying, but also promote some realistic programs and alternatives for hiring these young people. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Then, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Item fifty is approved. Next item, please.
Item number fifty-one, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden? Item number fifty-one.
It's been suggested that Mr. Pacheco has directed that I request that this matter be continued, and I, I'll accept that directive, Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Until Friday.
Request to continue this matter until Friday, January eleventh. Without objection, so ordered. Next item, please.
Item number fifty-two, called special in as much as there is a card from the public on the item.
We have members of the public wishing to be heard on item number fifty-two. Council calls forward Mr. Ted Green, to be followed by Armando Herman.
Thank you very much. I'm the statewide Coalition Director for the Yes on Proposition 42 Campaign, which is on the statewide ballot, March fifth. I'd like to thank Councilman Burnson for making the motion, and President Padilla for seconding the motion for the city to support Proposition 42. Forty-two simply dedicates the existing sales tax on gasoline for transportation purposes. It keeps faith with the motorists of California who rightly think the taxes they pay on gasoline will be spent on transportation. Proposition 42 has the support of the League of California Cities and the California State Association of Counties. It also has the support of the California Transit Association, because it would double the amount of state funding available for public transit. It's supported by, it was put on the ballot by a nearly unanimous vote of the legislature, has the support of Governor Davis, as well as Spike Kelmick, the Commissioner of the California Highway Patrol, the Automobile Club of Southern California, and the American Lung Association California Chapter. And we hope that after your vote today, it'll be supported by the city of Los Angeles as well. Thank you.
Mr. Armando Herman?
I know the other issue is of concern is about our streets being safer. The conditions of our streets are, are not very well to drive on anymore, with numerous potholes, and obviously, resurfacing is a major problem in the smaller neighborhoods that are not recognized. So I'm asking that if the city can possibly look into the matter with Public Works, because Public Works, when I call, tend to have a, a problem of saying, "Well, it's not within our budget, it's not within our physical time right now, so you're just gonna have to be patient." Well, I made a complaint a year ago purposely to see that it was addressed in a timely manner. And so as I waited, I said, "What's going on here? Why are you not addressing my complaint?" All I asked for was the condition of our street is deteriorated, water seeps up from the bottom, water stays stagnant on it. And I go, "You haven't done nothing there in twenty years, but yet you're willing to spend money in other areas that you're redeveloping?" And I says, "What's going on? Why not in the city of minority areas? We are the people that also contribute to our taxes in seeing that things in the city look beautiful." And so I speak not on behalf of myself of what I see and where I drive, but I speak on behalf of the people, the constituents. I had a six-year-old woman come up to me and said, "Mr. Herman..." I had some gentlemen from Public Works, they're patching a hole in front of my house. I walk up to them, I say, "Why are you patching this, this hole up that way? Why don't you do it the right way?" And they told the lady, "Why don't you mind your own business, old lady? We're doing our job." But she was right. She's lived here long enough to see that the conditions of our streets have gone from bad to worse. And yes, you resurface major streets that people drive on, they look great, but what about within the communities? What about where our children cross streets? What about where our handicapped children have to go across rugged terrain on the streets? And I know San Fernando Valley is the same, I know other areas of the city are bad in that condition. And I understand, when I read in the paper, that, you know, you're going out laying pavement for three hundred thousand miles or so, so to speak, a little exaggerated, but three hundred. So there has to be more money, obviously, to, to meet the needs of the overpopulation of people living in the city. I mean, it's, it's bad enough where you can't even park in your own neighborhoods, because people have to live, three or four families in one home in order to make ends meet. And yet I say, "I work just as hard as they do, and I'm paying taxes, and yes, now I see why our streets are falling apart. They bring their big trucks and park their semis on our residential streets, they park their ten-ton beasts there." And so it's, it has to come to at least a level of expectations for everyone in the community, everyone in Los Angeles. And so I, I hope you guys can sit down as a group, as a body, come together and say, "Okay, let's, let's start and do areas section at a time." I know the sidewalks are another issue, and it's not on this agenda, but, you know, our sidewalks are bad. We have elderly who walk. I've seen an elderly woman fall. Does anyone bother to go and pick her up? But she won't call the city and tell the city anything, because she knows the city is not gonna go out but simply do an asphalt patchwork. And that's just as dangerous for elderly people who walk and drag their feet to feel the contact of concrete.
Thank you.
And so I just ask that if you could please look into that and, and question or audit Public Works.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on item number fifty-two. Mr. Burnson.
Members of the council, this is an urgent measure. It's something that is desperately needed for the city, for the future, to make sure that our transportation system works and is improved. Without, as you know, with the crisis they have in Sacramento, our very funding for many of the things we have is in danger. We need to make sure that we have the ability to repair our streets and our highways and other transportation needs. So I would urge an eye vote. This is as close to GGS legislation, everybody supports it, and GGS stands for Good Government Stuff, in case anybody doesn't know the meaning of that. And so I would urge an eye vote on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to rise to support Mr. Burnson, Mr. Padilla in this motion here. Traffic in our roads, traffic in our roads, traffic in our roads. Traffic is what affects absolutely everybody in Los Angeles, and this will help us deal with the issues. There's reports recently in the paper about the high amount of cargo that was stolen off of trucks, and the violence to truck drivers. There was a reports in the paper about the trucks coming out of the port, and the heavy traffic on the freeways and the needs there. And I really think this is a, one additional step, this matter, this proposition, which will help the state focus on that, will help all of us focus on that. We have freeways that run through our city of Los Angeles, we have to make sure they're maintained and improved. And also the other issues as far as items of trash, we have to concentrate on that, to alert our citizenry to call the right number at sanitation, to call their council office to petition for the improvements of sidewalks and streets in their districts, so that it can be done, and work with your neighborhood association, which is so important, and I hope you could do that and work with your council office. Just wanted to thank Mr. Burnson for his continual leadership, and his fine deputy, Francine Ocean, for her work on transportation issues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Any other members wishing to be heard on item fifty-two? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Before going on to the next item, Chair recognizes Ms. Perry for an introduction.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm speaking today on behalf of Councilmember Mark Ridley Thomas, who had asked me to introduce the young folks here today from the First Church of God Christian School, I guess from the first grade up through junior high. And they are accompanied today by Mr. Johnson, who is their vice principal, and Ms. Marx, who is their chaperone, and also, Ms. Marx is a city employee. I'd like them all to stand and say welcome. Thank you very much, and we hope you enjoy your tour of City Hall today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, do we wish to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting?
Let's do so. Please call the roll on the special meeting.
Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Labange, Sikowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, twelve members present. Now, come on, Mr. President.
I believe we have one item special meeting agenda. Madam Clerk?
An item for which public hearing has not been held, it's communication from the CAO relative to release of information to LAFCO regarding the Valley Secession Proposal.
Okay, do not have a request for members of the public to be heard on this item. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Chair recognizes Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we should first have a report from the CLO, CLA, the CAO, on this, what this report was, that was prepared at the request of LAFCO.
Mr. President, members of the council, during the negotiations, we indicated that we had problems with LAFCO's analysis relative to the centralized cost of services, and they requested that we do an analysis of that. We have done so, that is what was before you today. We indicated that we thought that they had, because of the way they had handled the, the financial analysis, they had done it by contract, but they had underestimated the amount of... analysis, they had done it by contract, but they had underestimated the amount of, if you will, stranded cost or cost of central services. Those examples are, the one that was raised in negotiations was the cataloging or library services, cataloging for all the books that, if part of the books were, if you do it for each title, it has nothing to do with the number of books. There are also other kinds of services like nine-one-one, the criminal investigation laboratory, special investigations, et cetera, in the police department, and records and identification that fall in that category as well. CAO went methodically through each of the departments and did basically two types of analysis. One was basically what was some of the centralized services, but also if the valley was to leave, how much we would save. That amount has been included in this report, and we're following through on the request for information from LAFCO.
Yeah, one final comment is that, as stated in this report, we feel that it's absolutely essential that LAFCO, when they make the determination of the fiscal impact and revenue neutrality, that they consider these costs and other costs identified in the report that we'd like your authority to release to LAFCO.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the report has been addressed by the CLA and CAO. Essentially, it comes down to a very simple fact. The state law in creation of any new entity demands, requires, mandates revenue neutrality. That is, the entity from which a new city is created can't be harmed financially. LAFCO has asked, LAFCO has separate consultants who will look at the numbers that the city has put forward, but it essentially comes down to, this isn't just a question of splitting a budget, a city, one-third, two-thirds, and letting it work. There are costs, really, that the old city will continue to maintain that will not be lessened in any way. And in fact, the new city will have to pay. So there's really sort of a double cost or double accounting that needs to take place. Mr. Deaton talked about the central library, but another one that I think makes a lot of sense to us is the city clerk. We have fifteen councilmembers in this city. We have fifteen committees. We have the city clerk that must serve that. That will stay the same whether or not there is a new or separate new cities created. And in fact, the new city will also need a city clerk servicing council motions, council committees, et cetera, however they would be created. So I think this was a very good and thorough job done by the city, trying to, city financial entities, trying to show and explain this in a simple way. It is not the final word. It is sent to LAFCO. LAFCO's consultants will look at it. I'm sure have other questions of our agent entities. But in fact, as we work with LAFCO, work with the applicants for the new cities in terms of terms and conditions, this is something that need to be put on the table, and LAFCO's consultants will need to respond to it, however they then adjust and come out, with which they will, I think tomorrow, their comprehensive fiscal analysis, which we will then look at, respond to, and it's going to be something that I think over the next six months, we are going to be very, very much immersed in. And I appreciate that the city, through the CLA, the CAO, the mayor's office, and this council, is working very, very hard, at least getting the facts out there, so that as we look towards the end of the year with a vote on this matter, that not only our council, but our citizens throughout the city and every part of the city have facts on which they can make a judgment as to whether or not, how they want to vote on this matter that will be before us hopefully in November.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski. Any other members? Ms. Han?
Clearly, there's a couple other areas in the city that also are moving to secede. And my only question is, it does seem like most of the communication that we hear is communicated is about the valley secession. I'm wondering, is that because we have no comments on the harbor area secession? We are in agreement at this point with any of the initial fiscal analysis? Or I just sort of hear from my constituents, and I feel the same way. What's going on with the harbor and the Hollywood secession movements? And why is most of the communication centered around the valley?
Two different reasons, one on Hollywood and one on the harbor. On the Hollywood, we're in the data collection still process. Even the draft CFA has not come out on Hollywood. The draft CFA on harbor, as opposed to the valley, came out that it was not financially feasible. And so the level and the nature of the debate is different, or the discussion, debate. Yesterday, it was clear that LAFCO was, on the harbor side, was looking at, one of the criticisms we have of LAFCO's review of the valley, and quite frankly, of the harbor as well, is they just took a percentage cut of employees and spread all costs that way. The essence of this report is that you can't do that. The flip side of that on the harbor side is that they are looking at other cities in the county of the same population and see if there is, by not doing a percentage cut, is there a viable city for a city the size of the harbor? And I think that to the extent that is or is not true, that will be reflected in their CFA tomorrow or the next couple of days. If, I find it interesting that they found that in the harbor, a percentage didn't work, and they're rethinking it, perhaps they need to rethink it in all of them that they're looking at. And we will certainly try to encourage them to do so.
Mr. Holden?
Oh, excuse me, to ignore the harbor secession or the Hollywood action. It's just that they're running on separate tracks. They're not running on the same track right now. But it is changing because of the dynamics of the information that's coming in. And at this juncture, it was important for us to respond to the pending CFA that's coming out by LAFCO for the valley secession, to ensure that this issue of stranded cost, because you can look at the magnitude and the potential consequences. If LAFCO, through their deliberations, they do not address the stranded cost issue, the impact on the city, given the sheer numbers, we're talking about approximately $300 million, would have a devastating impact on our programs and services, to the point where there's no way we would maintain the same level and quality of services as we do now.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members of, we can go through this formality, but I think in the end, the people of this city would clearly understand, as they have in San Pedro, and that is, that they already have a mayor in South Bay area. They already have a council in the South Bay area. And they just won't stop it. They got a chief of staff, Tim McCosker, in the South Bay area. South Bay is satisfied that they're being well represented, I would hope. Otherwise, what else can we give them? And I think nothing else, I don't think. And the valley is also being represented. We got Mr. Burnson, you got Mr. Garcetti, and you got, you got, you go over the hill a little bit, don't you? Labange goes over the hill. You got Ms. McCosky goes over the hill, Mr. Weiss goes over the hill. And they are all good people, and they represent, it's a new image, it's a new day. And they represent the valley very, very well, and we need to put this nonsense to rest. Those individuals who try to make a big issue of secession don't live in the City of Los Angeles. I understand they live in Burbank or Glendale someplace. So the people of this city must understand who's stirring up all this mess, causing us to spend all this money. What's that guy named? Bane, Jeff, what's his name? Brain. Jeff, uh, Brain. Brain, the Brain lives outside of the city. Has that been reported? Is that correct? He lives in Glendale. He's been so disruptive in the City of Los Angeles. This is gonna have to stop. The public needs to know it. And I think that's why I wanted to stand up and say that, because they will hear this message, and they'll pass it on to their neighbors. We're not gonna spend any more of the taxpayers' money over this nonsense. We're not gonna bankrupt this city by dividing it. They need to know that, and they need to know it now. Hey, they know I'm with them in the valley. They gave me a good vote out there years ago. And I've not changed. I remember that. Thank you. I mean, if you break away and make a new city, I might have to move.
Mr. Zine?
Thank you. I only rise to inform Councilmember Holden that I'm one of the councilmembers that has an entire section of the San Fernando Valley, the West Valley, the third district, along with my distinguished colleague, the president, Councilmember Padilla. And other councilmembers have a portion of the valley. Councilman Burnson has the full section of the valley also. And the reason the valley wants to secede from the City of LA is because they don't believe they're getting the service. They don't believe they're getting the service. I will say that, Councilmember Holden. They're not getting police service. They're not getting the service they're paying for, and that's why they want to secede. If they received the services they were paying for, they wouldn't want to secede. And it's like a divorce. When you're not happy, you get divorced. When you're happy, you stay married. Mr. Labange, a very happily married man, he stays married because he's happy with his lovely wife. Some people aren't happy, and some people aren't happy in the valley who create secession. And all we need to do as a government is deliver the service they're paying for. It's a simple task to deliver the service. Make it a safe city, a clean city, and they'll be happy. You don't find Thousand Oaks. You don't find Burbank. You don't find Glendale. You don't find Beverly Hills. None of these other cities are asking to secede. And my colleague Janice Han from San Pedro, even though they have the mayor and distinguished colleague, Janice Han, and the chief, Tim McCosker, all these things play into the focus of, they want government to deliver the service. It's the bottom line. And when I meet with the Daily News people, they're constantly writing nasty editorials about Ron Deaton, and they call you all kinds of nasty names. What they're looking at is the streets to be paved, the sidewalks to be repaired, and when we talk about sidewalk liability, we'd rather pay the liability claim than fix the sidewalk. That's what causes the unhappiness in the San Fernando Valley, and the window etching and the graffiti, and it's the quality of life issues. So it's nothing that we can't handle, and I don't want to see this city secede. I want to see it stay whole, but at the same time, we've got to work to give them what they're paying for. And it's a matter of give them what they're paying for, they'll be happy, and God bless the San Fernando Valley.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Zine, thank you very much. It's very important, you know, when we talk about these issues here, that we have to work harder, that we have to work harder to make sure all the people who work for the City of Los Angeles work harder to serve the people, to serve the people. I'm proud that all parts of Los Angeles, that we know of Los Angeles, are part of this city. I'm proud that the Los Angeles River starts where Canoga Park High School is, where the Bell and Calabasas Creek come together and form it. And I tell my friends from the San Fernando Valley, that they didn't name it the San Fernando River, they named it the Los Angeles River because it runs through the City of the Angels down to the Port of Long Beach. All this has a great history, but the story that we have to be conscious of is we have to work harder for all our people every day, that we have the honor to serve them as elected officials, and we can deliver, and we can deliver for the valley. It has better schools. It has better physical sites than I had going up in Los Angeles. My elementary school is the same as it was forty years ago. My daughter goes there now. My high school still has the worst track in the city, next to Lincoln High School. And I know you're trying to improve that with the school district ed. And these are just things that are part of a town that grows up fast, which we did. But we have to improve all parts of the city, and by working harder to get the best services for the community, and hopefully convince the people that staying together is better. Because as one city, from where the water comes in, from the Owens Valley, and thank you, Mr. Mulholland, all the way up there at the Cascades down to San Pedro, where all the world now ships its goods through, this is part of the City of Los Angeles. It's important to do that, but we must work harder to convince the people, not just of the San Fernando Valley, but the harbor and Hollywood, that it's better that we're stronger together than separate and apart. Thank you very much.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. Zine, I'm not complaining about streets not being resurfaced in my district because I'm doing that. If you say, I can't say the inner city should secede from the City of Los Angeles because they're not getting good service, because I'm providing that. And that's what they elect me to do. I didn't hear Mr. Padilla say that they want to secede from the city because they're not getting good service, and Mr. Burnson, and they might be right in your district. I drove through it the other day, and I saw some of the potholes, I couldn't believe it. But the fact of the matter is that you just got elected, and you cannot be held accountable for that. You're not responsible for what didn't happen. And that's why I supported you for that job, to be elected, because I know you would be responsive, and you could stand up and say, "Here's why the valley wants to secede today." No, you would change that and say, "Here's why the valley wants to stay with the City of Los Angeles," because you're in position, and you're gonna make the difference. When I ran for office, there were those in certain parts of the city, in my district, saying, "I don't want to be in the 10th District. And if you get elected, would you reapportion us out of the 10th District?" And I said to them, "Yes, I will. If you're not satisfied with the service that I provide for the next four years or until reapportionment time, then out of the district you go." And when that time came, they said, "Mr. Holden, we're so satisfied with the service that you've been providing us that we want to stay in the 10th District." And I'm sure that when the time comes, knowing as responsive you are to police response time, Ms. Perry, you won't even listen to me because you're talking to him. You're a police officer, you're still a police officer. If the police response time is not compatible with the inner city, we need to know that, and you need to say it, not say they're not getting good police service. If the fire paramedic's not responsive, the response time is prescribed by the audit, say that, and we'll help you to get it for your ballot or any other district that's being represented by the members of the council. That's what we're here for. But to stand up and say, "This wrong, that's wrong, that's wrong, that's wrong," and that's why you want to leave, you want to run for the mayor? Are there? I don't think so. You've got the job you want. You have the responsibility that you asked for, and I know you were carried out. You're that kind of a guy. Do you understand? And I'll help you to do that.
Mr. Zine?
I think we're on crossfire. CNN, crossfire.
The battle of the goatees.
Yeah, we could debate this till doomsday, but I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Holden, and we'll have further discussion on this, but I think we need to move this question. Thank you.
We have one remaining speaker on the queue. If we can allow courtesy to Ms. Han.
Let me just say this one thing. I'm glad to hear you say that, Councilman Holden, and I hope that when I ask for more things from my part of the district, you will help me as well. And while this secession debate will go on through November, I hope it doesn't just boil down to numbers and statistics, because let me just tell you, and I know we all think our parts of the city are the most important and need to be serviced the best, but my communities of Wilmington and San Pedro are different. Wilmington and San Pedro were asked to join the City of Los Angeles in 1909 and were promised specific things. There is a memorandum of ten or eleven specific things that this City of Los Angeles promised those communities in exchange for signing on to be a part of the City of Los Angeles so that the harbor could be one of our greatest assets. And I want to tell you, we have not lived up to those promises. We have not given them what we told them we would give them. So it's not just a matter of streets not being surfaced. It's not just a matter of police response being short. There are specific things. So I hope when I bring up our part of the bargain with those communities, that as we move forward, we will work to finally fulfill some of the financial promises that we made to the communities of Wilmington and San Pedro, so that indeed, they will once again think that their decision some seventy-five years ago was the right decision.
I was just gonna comment. My understanding is Mr. Holden was a signatory to that.
Mr. Zine?
Again, I call for this to be moved, and then Councilmember Holden and I'll have our fight in the parking lot after the council session today.
Okay, there are no speakers waiting to be heard. This ends discussion. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item number one of the special agenda is approved. And I believe forthwith on that. Now, do you believe that concludes special agenda? Let's adjourn the special meeting and go back to the regular agenda.
Next item, Mr. President. There are several special motions brought in. Special one was a motion presented by Councilmember Pacheco, and the city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Madam City Attorney on the findings?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This has to do with a vacation of Matthews Street between Whittier Boulevard and 7th Street. This vacation was accomplished quite a while ago. However, there's a land swap that needs to happen immediately in order for construction of a football field, a sports adjacent, Jason Sports Field, sports facility, and for the city to be able to expand their parking structure. And in order to do this, there needs to be an ordinance by the city attorney brought in, and this is asking that the city attorney bring the ordinance in on Friday, January 11th. Therefore, the council needs to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and that there's an immediate need to act.
Mr. Pacheco, did you wish to be heard on the findings or on the motion itself? Okay, then, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Special one now before us, Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, this is a technical matter from the standpoint that we are trying to do a swap of pieces of property between the private entity, the Archdiocese, and the city of Los Angeles, so that each side of the equation can maximize the use of the roadway there. We will be utilizing that road for parking and making a safe environment for the park right there, Bull Heights, and they need their portion to complete the home field, so I would simply ask for your support and instruct the city attorney to bring back an ordinance on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on special one, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Forthwith, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, special two is a motion presented by Councilmember Burnson, and the city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has to do with the December 21st action of the council in passing an ordinance and approving a contract for placement of street furniture and signs on public streets. Since that time, there has been, by subsidiary company, some possible illegal activities, and the council is concerned about business practices. It is asking that the council review, that the city attorney review the contract of the parent company, inform the city of the options, and therefore, the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and that there's an immediate need to act.
Okay, I have both Ms. Perry and Mr. Burnson wishing to be heard. Is this on the findings or on the motion? On the findings? Ms. Perry?
Clarification from the city attorney. Is this company in fact a subsidiary of the company that has had the contract with street furniture or not?
Actually, Mr. Westhoff may be able to address that issue more fully than I.
Is that on the findings or on the subject matter? Let's, Ms. Perry?
It's not on the findings.
Okay, I have Mr. Burnson, Ms. Sikowski, and Mr. Holden, unless there's questions from the three of you on the findings themselves, let's proceed with the...
Who has the floor? Who has the floor?
No, I do right now.
I have the floor?
I do right now. Unless either of the three of you have a question on the findings, tell me if you do. On the findings, on the findings, on the findings? Then let's take a vote on the findings and proceed with questions on the matter itself. Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
On the findings.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Special two is now before us. Now with the questions.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, what I may want to, this may help a little bit, but I think that part of what we're being asked, what the city attorney's office is being asked to do is to investigate the relationship of the companies, and make sure, and find out if one is a subsidiary, or if one is related, or the relationships.
Okay, that is Ms. Perry's first question. Ms. Perry, still on your time. Is your city attorney ready?
Yeah, Mr. Westhoff, go back to the table and clarify that.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Christopher Westhoff, Assistant City Attorney. It's my understanding that the company that signed the agreement with MTA is a company called Omni STI. Viacom, which is one of the joint venture partners, apparently got into that particular deal as a financial backer of STI after that contract was signed. So Viacom is now a financial participant in the MTA contract, even though they are not a signatory to that agreement. A Viacom and Deco, who are the joint venture that signed the contract with the city for the street furniture, is a separate entity, but Viacom is a financial participant in the MTA contract through an agreement with STI, but it is STI that is a signatory...
That's called a partner, by the way.
Correct, and it is my understanding that STI was the one who did the acts on the 28th and 29th of December.
Ms. Perry, did you have further questions? Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, what we're asking basically in this motion is for the mayor not to sign the contract at this time, and for them to investigate the relationship, and also, I don't know, Jan, do you want this back in your committee? What's that? I can't hear.
Yes.
Yes, and that we send the matter to Jan's committee, and this is brought in as a result of a gross violation on the part of this company, STI, which is an affiliate of Viacom, as is the company that has the contract with us for the street furniture. It's amazing that this was done on the last day of council session this year, and on their attempt to try to beat what they thought was state legislation, which gave local jurisdiction over billboard placement to local agencies. The fact is that we've always had it, and as a matter of fact, even though it may be, MTA may be another agency, they only have the right to grant permits for things which are within their jurisdiction. Current, obviously, commercial advertisement is not within their jurisdiction. We have had test cases on this before, and the city has prevailed. We had a test case with Cal State University Northridge a number of years ago. And as a matter of fact, the MiniMed, which is a beautiful project, was only built after the university worked with our office and with the city, and we reached a accord on it to allow them to proceed, because that was not within the jurisdiction of the college. So we have case history on our side, and obviously, this was a flagrant attempt to usurp our local authority here, and I think that we need to, if nothing else, we need to get their attention, we need to let them know this can't be tolerated. I've already spoke to the representative, they are equally chagrined by the action of this company, and I think that sending it back to Jan's committee doesn't mean that it's dead, it just means we're going to look at it, and we're going to make sure that this type of thing doesn't happen again. So I would urge an aye vote on this.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Before proceeding to the next speaker, we have had a card submitted from a member of the public. The council calls forward Mr. Mort Allen.
I guess I want to speak with house permission as part of the ad hoc sign committee that's worked on this. The thing that is really, really disturbing to me is, this is a typical pole sign. This is the way it looks at, you know? The lawn needs to be cut. But what you have here is, and I guess, Alex, you could answer this the best, this is like the greatest marvel of engineering. They stick a pole in the ground, and then they have about five tons that come out here, hanging out for about 50 feet. Now, when they put in a pole, it's got to be fabricated, the factory tests it, you have all this engineering, building and safety requires inspectors out there, the cement has got to be, goes in so far, and it's tested in so far, because we have earthquakes, and we have huge windstorms, and if it's next to the train, trains can derail. Now, my concern is the fact that these were all stuck in without permits in the ground is, to me, probably the most gross violation of our building codes ever, because, and it goes back to something that we've asked for for a long time, and even though my best friend owns a billboard company, I still think we've got to investigate every billboard in this city to make sure they're put in with a permit, because there's been a lot of poles, and interestingly enough, the majority of the billboards built in the last five years are in the 5th District. They're mostly around Robertson, and around in there, it's really jammed up. Now, you know who the former councilman was there, but we have, probably the fewest are in Dennis's district and some of the others, because the people want where the advertisers pay the most. And don't kid yourself, this billboard on the 405 freeway in Culver City rents for $50,000 a month a face. In Studio City on my building, just on Ventura Boulevard, it rents for $6,000 a month. That's huge money on billboards, and so we need it for the economy. The other thing, I think most of you get the L.A. Business Journal, there's a very interesting story in yesterday's Business Journal, that the bus shelters are going digital, that they're going to have like the Staples sign, where they're going to be changing the messages. Well, that's going to cause all kinds of traffic wrecks, and you've got to have controls on the sidewalk advertising, because, I mean, to me, I think there's nothing wrong with billboards well-spaced in the city, I think there shouldn't be any bus shelters, I think there shouldn't be any street furniture. I think the businesses have to make money, and if, when you have a shelter in front of a store, the rent gets cut in half, they do no business because they're hidden. Well, they do a lot of sales tax. And so this whole issue has been from the old council, and I just think you've got to start from the beginning, I think you've got to look at every company as the enemy, and you've got to say, hey, you're going to get in line if you want to stay in L.A. Okay?
Thank you. This concludes public comments on special two. Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was happy to second this motion by Mr. Burnson. I would offer an amendment that, inasmuch as the city attorney is going to be reporting back and investigating the status of the relationship between the company that committed the violations we've heard about, which is putting billboards up along MTA right-of-way in violation of the MTA contract, in violation of the city's billboard moratorium, in violation of not getting permits to look at the structural integrity, that those, that the relationship between those companies be investigated. I have learned that the contract in fact was signed, the mayor signed the ordinance that we sent forth with on the last day of our action of this, of last year, and that the contract was executed by the Board of Public Works. However, my amendment is that the city attorney further explore with the company that we have had that contract executed, whether or not there is because of, or due to relationships that may be between that company and the company that was erecting the billboards illegally, whether or not there's a violation, or comes under the city's contractor responsibility ordinance. A year, two years ago, we adopted an ordinance which said when we do business with the contractor and find that that contract, first of all, that contractor is obligated to tell us when they are in default, when they are in fault, when they are in violation of other contracts with other governmental agencies, that, and that we then can look as to whether or not that is a fulfillment of our own contract because of their lack of good faith, or worse in other jurisdictions. So I would like the city attorney to report on that as well. I have no problem with that all coming back as a report to Ms. Perry's committee, but that ordinance was specifically to deal with when we were letting contracts, and in some cases, contracts for money in the city, contractors for people to build projects, et cetera, and finding that those same contractors were in violation in other cities, in default, penalties being fined against them in other cities, we needed to know about it. So I think we need to first of all find out what the relationships are between these two companies, as Mr. Westhoff quickly went through. Let's look at it in a little more detail, and let's look and see whether or not there is any violation on our contractor responsibility ordinance that might affect anything going forward. But I appreciate this ordinance, it was urgent. I also want to commend and thank Mr. Burnson, who, over the holiday, when things were a little bit quiet around here, got on the phone from another area, called me in another area, he contacted Supervisor Yaroslavsky, the city attorney, and we had the very fast actions, so that on the second day of this year, the city attorney was in court to get a temporary restraining order. County council was at his side, saying that in fact, that those billboards were in violation of the MTA contract, and that quick work stopped something at a point before it might have been harder to recover. So I congratulate Mr. Burnson and the city attorney for their quick work on this action, and now the city council needs to look at that in terms of its contractual obligations with what it may go forward or may not.
Mr. Holden.
On procedure, Mr. Burnson says that the contract has not been signed by the mayor. Is that correct, Mr. Burnson, yes or no?
The contract has not been signed.
Ms. Sikowski said the contract has been signed, is that...
The ordinance has been signed. The contract has been signed, and the ordinance was executed, but again, rather than taking anybody's word for it, let's send it as is the motion.
No, just a minute, there's a process. On procedure, if the contract has not been signed, you just can't ask the mayor to just delay it. There's a timeframe, there's a timeframe whereby he has to sign it, or is deemed automatically approved. He signed the ordinance, what about the contract? There's no time, Mr. Deaton, any time required for signing of the contract as well? Yes or no?
What is the question?
Oh, you weren't paying attention?
I was, but I couldn't hear you.
All right. As the ordinance, there's a time required that the mayor must sign the ordinance, otherwise he'll go into law without his signings. Is that correct?
Right.
What's the timeframe on that? And does that also apply to the contract?
I think it's 60 days.
The mayor has 10 days to sign the ordinance.
10 days.
The mayor has 10 days, what about the contract?
The mayor doesn't sign the contract.
Yeah, the Board of Public Works was authorized to sign that.
The situation is, is the ordinance was signed by the mayor.
Oh, that's a done deal, Mr. Burnson.
Last calendar year, the Board of Public Works has executed the contract, and there is a contract in place now.
Right, so you don't have...
They signed the contract.
So there's nothing before us, Mr. Burnson?
However, I think the amendment, that what I am anticipating the city attorney is to look at the existing contract, which has been in force for every time, to see if there is some provision that in fact has not been followed through with, but there is an existing contract.
That's a different, it's a different subject.
That was the amendment.
Well, it's not an amendment, it's a substitution, really, because actually, you're not asking, your amendment does not suggest that the mayor refer the matter back to the council and not sign the contract. And the special two, that's what it states. And so therefore, Ms. Sikowski, you're saying that if there's certain requirements in the contract, which requires the contractor to make certain commitments, or revelations to reveal to the seat of Los Angeles when certain circumstances occur, which is outside the terms and conditions of the contract. Is that pretty much what you were saying?
It was a substitution for the second clause. The first clause is fine, saying that the city attorney should report back on the status and the city's options, and instead of saying that the mayor not sign it, I substitute that the city attorney also report back on whether or not there's violation of the existing contract, the relationship between the two companies, and whether or not there's a violation of the contractor responsibility ordinance that we can look at as it relates to the contract.
So that's where I needed clarification of procedure, and I think it's clear that eventually, the matter will be discussed in Ms. Perry's committee, but it's a done deal, it sounds like to me. Well, we're not even at that point yet, and not likely to, but, yeah, but I don't know if you have grounds to cancel the contract or not, not without... All right, I voted, I didn't vote for it, so you guys want to play fun and games, be my guest.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to commend Mr. Burnson, because while we were on break, Mr. Burnson jumped on this, and he jumped on it vigorously, he contacted everyone around the city, and we're really here today. The fact that this issue is here today, front and center, as well it should be, is a testament to Mr. Burnson and his staff. And I also want to support the motion, or the amendment offered by my colleague Ms. Sikowski, I think it's a very good one. This is a significant problem, and we do need to get to the bottom of it. I think we should all be pleased that the city attorney, like Mr. Burnson, jumped into this right away, vigorously and promptly took the matter to court. But colleagues, we should not be all that surprised by what happened here, because let's face it, at the end of the last council session, there's just no doubt about it. We voted to put a sandwich board around the city of Los Angeles by approving this street furniture contract. And so what happened? Either a related or a separate billboard entity decided to take advantage of what might have been perceived as a lack of will, a lack of backbone in this city when it comes to visual blight. I mean, this is a time in this city when we should be focusing on beautifying this city, and instead, what do we do at the end of the last year? We decided to do just the opposite, to sell more ads on city property throughout the entire city over the next 20 years. So I support this motion, I support this effort, and I look forward to hearing what the city attorney can find out.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Mr. Deaton, has the city received the payment that they were promised on this yet? The financial compensation? The financial compensation?
Not to my knowledge. There's a $3 million payment. My understanding is on its way. I would be surprised if this week goes by that it's not paid.
Just...
Well, I'm saying if it hasn't been...
Just a gut, but...
If it hasn't been paid, maybe we want to refuse to accept that at this time, just so we don't muddy the waters. And I also have a concern regarding the poles that have already been established, which Mr. Allen said didn't have any permits. I'm concerned about a safety hazard while this goes through litigation, if we should make a motion, direction, that they be removed since there weren't permits and it may be a safety hazard since there are large metal poles that have been erected, and I don't know how many have been erected around the city, but a safety hazard for the populace of Los Angeles while they stand there waiting to be completed. Not only an eyesore, but a safety hazard if the ground wasn't tested, if the cement wasn't appropriate, and one of them falls over and God forbid someone gets hurt, and then everyone's gonna be negligent and liable.
I would suggest that you ask the city attorney to report back on Friday on what would be the appropriate action relative to that, along with building and safety. I don't think that you should, I don't think you should act today, but I think you should continue that part of it until Friday and ask the city attorney and building and safety to report back on what would be the appropriate action. I think that's...
For those existing poles?
For the existing poles. Nope. I, I think that's, that's a rational, but I don't think it would be appropriate to act today on that without knowing both the legal and, and building and safety issues, but I think it's an issue that the council should address.
Do we know how many have been established? How many have been planted at this point?
I don't.
But there have been some.
That's my, at least the preliminary work. Whether there's actually any poles up or not, I'm not sure.
I believe there were eight. And I also believe building and safety has been out to the sites.
So we can include that, to have the building and safety to find out if they should be immediately removed for public safety?
Right. And that could come back Monday. I don't, I mean, Friday. I don't see any reason for that to, you can have a report back immediately on that, but just, I, I think it would be inappropriate to do it today, but I think you get a report back on Friday.
And then if that case is, if they're illegal and they're a hazard, then they'd be immediately removed.
Then you'd have a, they would be a corrective action that the city attorney and the building and safety could suggest.
Okay. Was that proceeded, was that a process in place?
I think you need to make that motion.
I'll make that motion. Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Zeig.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, coincidentally, yesterday I had a meeting with Ron Sobel, the head of the MTA, just to talk about issues related to that, and he did touch on this briefly, that all work has stopped on the sites and they are returning it to, back to a point where there wasn't any molestation of the ground by this construction. But I would also like to suggest that maybe a representative from MTA come in just to talk about that specifically to the sites, because they know them better than we do as far as where their properties, because they may not be as visible as division bus yards as we know, because other entities of government own property throughout the region. So if that is a friendly amendment...
They're all on their backs.
Okay, good. All right, well, thank you very much.
Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I was remiss in not thanking some of the people who helped us on this, and I, I wanna do so publicly. First of all, our city attorney, Rocky Delgado was, was terrific in this case. I reached him at his home on New Year's Day and the next day, they were in court. So Andrew Adelman from Building and Safety, I spoke to him, I think, three or four times New Year's Day, and he was on the job the next day with stop work orders. Councilman, councilman, I wanna still want him councilman because we served together, Supervisor Yaroslavsky. I spoke to him and urged him to get in touch with Bill Pellman, who's the county council. He did so. And everybody did a great job on this and they deserve a lot of credit. This is not to try to stop what Ms. Perry wants in her district. I think it's necessary. If it isn't going to be this particular firm or this plan, we need to do something to address that problem. I think we all support that. And I just want that understood. I've already spoken to representative who represents the company. I think there are gonna be some promises and considerations made if this goes forward. We're just gonna take a look at the contract. We do have the ability, by the way, for, for reasons, to invalidate contracts with the city if there are mitigating circumstances, and we certainly do have some possible circumstances here. I don't necessarily wanna invalidate the contract, but I think there may be some assurances that some of us may want as far as future signs are concerned and how they're conducted and so forth. And those, that's where we're really going with this, and I think that we'll ask the city attorney to report back to us. Ms. Perry will look at this in committee and have discussions with Mr. Sunken. And I think that ultimately, we can resolve this matter that addresses the problem. But the important thing is that everybody will now recognize the fact that you can't usurp local authority. That's the point. This is the whole mission here. It isn't whether you're pro billboards, anti billboards, whether you're pro office furniture, you know, street furniture. The, the message here is you've got to deal with our local authorities in doing business with the city. You can't just go ahead and put up what you want and to heck with the, with the process. And that's what this is about. So I would urge an I-vote. This will be back before us, and I've already made an assurance to Jan that I will support if not this, in its proper form with the proper assurances, than some other form of dealing with their problem and the problem that they have in other portions of the city where this relates.
Mr. Pacheco.
Move the previous question.
It does a great motion.
Previous question has been moved. Mr. Race and Ms. Miskowski were waiting to be heard. Let's, Mr. Race just desires a second. We can take a quick vote. On the previous question, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that ends discussion on the motion itself, special two. Madam Clerk, is this special two as amended?
Yes, Mr. President. If all those amendments were accepted, you can just vote on special two as amended.
Okay, all accepted as friendly amendments. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on special two as amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Not on the agenda, special three, a motion presented by council member Weiss, seconded by council member Garcetti, and the city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. On January 6th, Irwin Street Elementary School was vandalized and the police department have no leads. They've asked for a reward motion. Therefore, the council would meet, make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda and that there's an immediate need to act.
Anybody wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Special three now before us. Anybody wishing to be heard on the motion itself?
One thing before we vote on it. These are the, I saw this on television last night. This is more than just vandalism. This was hate crime type things with swastikas and other types of, of hate crime type things. I think there's no place for this and I, I hope that we'll move judiciously and quickly the police to bring these people to justice.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I, thank you. You know, I saw something yesterday that just took my breath away. I got a call in the middle of the day and raced up to the Irwin Street School in my district, and this is, this is an elementary school, primary school, and nine classrooms there were the subject of the most awful sort of vandalism. Because it wasn't vandalism, it was a hate crime. There were KKK symbols, swastikas, spray painted white power sprayed it all across the doors, blackboards, classrooms. It was just unbelievable. I was in a first grade classroom where the entire blackboard was spray painted from wall to wall, KKK. I mean, it's just hard to believe. And, but it happened. It happened here in our city and it happened just two days ago. I have, and I can't swear to this, but I have very little doubt that the person who did this is a resident of that community, is known to others in that community, and I think it would enable, really would aid the police department in finding who did this, for all of us to stand squarely behind this reward motion, offer a couple thousand dollar reward. I think maybe we can get some tips. We can solve this crime. And I think it will send a message if and when this crime is prosecuted as a hate crime, not as a mere vandalism. It'll really send an important wake-up call to that community. So I ask for your support.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard on special three? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith. Next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on the agenda under council's jurisdiction.
And we do have a few folks wishing to address the council. The council calls forward Armando Herman to be followed by David Jackson and Mort Allen.
This will probably be the final outspokenness from me, but I just wanna point out, don't take this personally, but maybe you can come together as a group and see, see the feelings of the people out there. And I wrote this, I was spared the moment, it says, "Would you like to be treated respectfully, fairly, and honestly? I would like to live in a world without racial prejudice or crime, like we just heard. I would like to believe everyone should or show concern for the feelings and welfare of others. Actually, who would say no to such possibilities? The grim reality is that very few enjoy the conditions others are enjoying. Today, our high-tech world is self-centered, as we've heard about these billboards, unfortunately. Few consider thinking about others when their own convenience or supposed rights are at stake. Therefore, the vital question that I say, what must we do? Or what must we consider? I'm just asking hopefully by the things I've stated today, that there's some positive reaction from this group or this body of council to go out and clean up the community and provide the community with some resolutions. It's unfortunate there are people who don't care about education, don't care about our police, don't care about our government, and they go about destroying and committing crimes of violence and bring other atrocities to those within the community. So I say unless this council comes together and stiffen up some laws, be sure to stick to the ordinances that we've created, then we can put an end to a lot of our problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. David Jackson to be followed by Mort Allen and Candido Maris.
Yes, good morning, President, and councilmember persons. My name is David Jackson and I'm the person, or I'm the man, or the boy, has cried wolf in the city of Los Angeles. I have been convicted and tried in two criminal proceedings, only to have Honorable Judge Fahey to overturn those convictions. And still yet today, I have no one from the Public Safety Committee, or from this consent decree that went down, that had heard David Jackson's name. I recently, just a few days ago, had a mental lapse. I had to be taken and put into a hospital because I'm deteriorating right before my own eyes and before other people I'm around. I don't appreciate the fact that because I'm black or because I could be considered a thug or something like that, which isn't true, or a gang member, which isn't true, none of the above, but I be treated in such a way that no one seems to would take turn to say, well, why come Mr. Jackson isn't as important? I'm the same person that this person just left here talks about in one sense or another, that people are horrible, gang members or stuff like that. But it's not right that I feel to believe that people from the Los Angeles Police Department will give fictitious names to the city who represent them as police officers to have their names put fictitiously before federal courts, as for instance, Harold R. Compton, spelling his name wrong, or lawyers that I had actually spelled these people's names wrong, knowing that they took these people's names from lists. I just feel that it's terrible that no one cares. And one day, when my information come out, you understand me, we might have another Rodney King on our hands. And we need not that in the city of Los Angeles. We really don't need that. And I would like to just come here today and say that I'm the person who's cried wolf. And one day, if the city was to burn down because someone seen the way they was treating someone who had diligently set forth to, to ask what his constitutional rights were and, and come forth with those, and have someone said, I had a right. I just really feel bad if the city was to burn again and then to beleaguer members that had come on this board, new or old, and say they never really cared.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mort Allen to be followed by Candido Maris.
Not again. What this shows you, I just wanted to put a sample up. We've got the greatest leadership now. We've got two family, families, the Delgaditos and the Hans running the city, okay? People are talking about this Splintered Valley stuff. There's so much garbage going on out there right now and that nobody's really looking at. I mean, I happen to really feel horrible about the story about Alex in the paper because it's, it's garbage. I mean, I, I read the paper where they said the lobbyists were paid $112,000 for the shelter and toilet contract, which was three years. I think you ought to add about a million on to that, because everybody knows that three years of lobbying was not $112,000. Yet they say that he did some fundraising, but on the other hand, he can do a fundraiser to pay it back. And it's all just, it's like garbage of everybody trying to get everybody else, the city versus the valley. And what you don't understand is Jeffrey Brain does not represent the valley. Neither does Richard Close. But what's happening is all this negative is coming out, and I can just give you this situation. In the early 1970s, Mayor Sam Yordi lived in Studio City, Councilman Jimmy Potter lived in Studio City, the C, CAO, I can't think his name now, the old FBI agent, lived in Studio City.
Piper.
Piper, lived in Studio City, okay? And every Sunday, there was council held at Arts Deli. Everybody walked the street. Now we only have three councilmen that live in the valley out of all the districts. And the other, the three big districts, like Cindy and Jack, they live in the other side of the hill. So there's really nobody to come to. What we don't have is we don't have a meeting hall in the valley. I mean, you guys just spent $600 million to build the Kodak Theater, and I gotta tell you, I was there on New Year's Eve, the seats are tiny. You spent, what, $200 million to build the Staples Center? The seats are tiny. In the valley, we have the Van Nuys Airport that's been standing vacant, the Air National Guard, the 75 acres, that has a 2,500-seat auditorium. It's got room to sleep 2,000 homeless. It's got this whole huge thing there that's got a padlock on it that we're not using for anything. And there's no place to meet in the valley. You gotta go pay rent to the air tower or something. And I think that it's so small, it is, everything has gotten out of line. Would you like that as a gift? Yes. And as far as Jan Perry's situation, I have been told, and I snoop around a lot, that San Francisco has ripped out eight toilets and that they're being shipped down to LA because they don't want them. And I suggest that they go to Jan's district where she needs it, and that should solve that problem. And I guess that's all I can say today. And I guess that's all I can say today.
Thank you very much. Candido Maris.
Thank you, Mr. President, for finding my card that I filled out. First of all, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and may you be blessed with good health and wisdom. But it's exciting to come back and hear this council talk about quality of life issues and to be allocating dollars for community events, for cleanups. But it takes more than just dollars. It takes partnerships. It takes you, our leaders, to join us in the community, the nonprofits, the churches, the people that work in the area, even the kids, even the gang members can be used to improve the quality of life in your neighborhood. In September and October, Mayor Han brought happy and healthy neighborhoods to one of our areas in the Van Nuys area, and we took an alley, one of the worst alleys in the valley, and we took it, and we had 400 people come in and clean it up. We had dollars to help us with that, but we had leadership. We had the mayor's office there, working with us, hand by... Hand in hand, trying to remove the graffiti and clean up the area. We had, with council and Ms. Kinkowski, we planted trees on Irwin Street. We have gang members now that have adopted those trees. That's an improvement. That's an improvement. In Mr. Burnson's district, we took children up there to clean up paths where people were throwing beer cans, and what has happened now, a lot of these kids are going up there and they're using those paths, but they're also using them and cleaning them. So, Mr. President and council members, we need leadership, we need dollars, but we need partnerships. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment period for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Motions for posting and referral.
The motions are posted and referred.
Council has excuses on the desk. Councilmember Burnson requests to be excused Wednesday, January 9th and January 23rd to arrive late, and also Friday, January 11th and the 15th, and those are all for city business.
Mr. Burnson is excused.
Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused Friday, January 11th. City business, that meets council policy.
Mr. Ridley Thomas is excused.
Council President Padilla requests to be excused Friday, January 25th to leave at noon, and Wednesday, February 6th, and those meet council policy, and those are both for city business.
I'll excuse myself.
Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused Wednesday, January 23rd. City business meets council policy.
Ms. Galanter is excused.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Friday, January 25th to leave at noon, and Friday, February 1st, and those are for city business. They meet council policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
Councilmember Ms. Sikowski requests to be excused to arrive late Wednesday, January 9th for city business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Sikowski is excused.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Any announcements? Mr. Labonge.
Today is the birthday of Elvis Presley, which I think is important to recognize. We had the greatest athlete in here, and I'm sorry, it was your deputy that I heard it from that...
We have Krispy Kreme donuts in the back.
You got it, yeah, but no, but rock and roll music and music and arts and humanities are all apart, people. All about togetherness, so I just wanted to recognize Elvis Presley on the day of his birth, that he left too soon. And I remember the very emotional meeting Eddie Banks remembers that they had when they adjourned in his memory so many years ago when he went before his time, but God bless Elvis Presley.
So, thank you. And Mr. Labonge, great coverage on what was an event with mixed emotions, the temporary closure of the observatory last weekend. It was a great celebration, all that the observatory represents and means for the city of Los Angeles, and we thank you for shepherding the project for the next couple of years and reopening it even bigger and better for generations to come. Ms. Perry for an announcement?
I have two adjourning motions, all. Way too many.
Okay. Any other announcements? Then please stand for adjourning motions.
I have one, too.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I ask you to join with me today in adjourning our council meeting in the memory of Fernando Kenneth Hillman, who was born in 1970 and died tragically only 31 years later this past week. Fernando was a... Worked in the... As a metal fabricator, but Dennis and I attended his funeral on Saturday, and I was amazed at many of the tributes about him, talked about his great love of sports, his great love of athletics, his ability to memorize the stats of over 5,000 baseball cards, and a lot of tributes who said... People who just said what a great person Fernando was and how much he loved life, cared about people, and was always willing to share his faith with those. Many of you will know his father, Ken Hillman, who is a director with the Los Angeles Police Protective League and has spent many times right down here on this council chambers floor. So I ask you that you will join with me and extend our deepest sympathies to Ken and Linda Hillman in this must be always a different kind of grief to have one of your children pass away before you.
I believe Mr. Zine wishes to co-present on that and seconded by all members. Mr. Burnson.
Yes, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Dr. Frank M. Luca Torto, who's a resident, who was a resident of the 12th Council District in Northridge, and he survived by his wife, children, Patrick, Tony, Mark, and Anna Marie Nelson.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, said to announce the passing of Ms. Joyce Lipkin... Lipkus. She was a community activist, a founding member of the Crenshaw Neighbors Association, retired English professor at Santa Monica College, graduate UCLA Phi Beta Kappa, and lived in my district for a number of years with her husband, Dr. Leon Lipkus. She was memorialized. Services were held December at the headquarters of the Tree People in Coldwater Canyon Park. And that's because her son is Andy Lipkus, and I met him with a little boy sitting in the bed playing with toys, and his mother says, "My son, Andy, I don't know what he's going to become, but he's going to become something." And he's become something good for the city of Los Angeles, planting trees throughout the entire city, county, and giving examples around the world. So she certainly raised a good son among the other two kids, and she will be missed. We also have, Mr. President, members...
All members.
Delos Robertson Beaver, Mrs., she was 85 years old at the time of her death, was a longtime resident of 10th District. She was a member of the Holman United Methodist Church, where she taught Sunday School and participated in various church-related organization activities. Ms. Robertson was... Worked for 49 years for the federal government in various branches. In recent years, she returned to her native Marshall, Texas, where the funeral services will take place this coming Saturday. So she will be missed as well, Mr. President, members.
Mr. Labonge.
Mr. President, members of council, tragically a young man, 17 years old, lived in the district. He was a student at Loyola High School. He lived in the shadow of the observatory in the Los Feliz Oaks section. He was a great member of the Loyola debate team. Ishmael Munoz tragically had cancer from the age of three, but battled it, and was a great member of Troop 20 of our Mother of Good Council Boy Scout troop, and fought hard and had great recognition to receive the Eagle Scout, along with five other members, last Saturday. Unfortunately, God called him last Thursday, and he wasn't there, but everyone in the community was so proud of him because he never gave up in his fight for cancer and his life that he lived, and his great involvement with Loyola High School and Troop 20 in reaching the rank of Eagle Scout. He survived by his mother, Lorraine Munoz, who is also a federal judge in the immigration and naturalization area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco.
Just put me a second on that.
Which is the second? Ms. Perry.
Yes, I'd like to make two adjourning motions today. One is in memory of Helen Margaret Doyle. She's the grandmother of my field deputy Pamela Huntoun, born in 1908, and was a beloved grandmother, cherished friend, and great-grandmother to Pamela and many, many other... Great-grandmother to 13 children, and she died on January 4th. I would also like to adjourn in memory of Chiquita Williams Smith. She was born March 12, 1947, died December 5, 2001, of heart ailment at the age of 54 years old. She survived by her husband of many years, Jasper Smith, her mother, Mary Wire, and their son, Mark Anthony Williams, and she will be remembered as a committed community activist, a loving wife, and a devoted mother.
Any others? Mr. Holden.
Mr. Dennis Zine has a new look and is good-looking.
Colleagues, I also have a request to be adjourned in memory of Mrs. Chris Hewitt, who lived in the 2nd Council District. She passed away at the age of 94, and she died in the very Studio City home that she's lived in for 71 years, since she was married in 1930. She was a mother, she was a grandmother, she was a survivor of the flood in 1938, social activist in the community, and is one of the group of individuals who first persuaded Joel Wax to run for city council back in 1971. And I'm sure her family and her community will be missed, seconded by Mr. Burnson and all members.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.